What's the pleasure of the board?
With the motion, we accept the meeting minutes from the 9:324 meeting.
I'll second.
Moved in second, we approved the minute meeting from 9:324. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Opposed. Four in favor, one abstention. We have no A1Ps, so we're going to start the joint meeting with the Ad-Hoc Committee. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you all, thanks for having us again. MAPC is here, Josh Vialla again helping lead the project, and I'm joined tonight by a different face, maybe you've seen him at some of our community forums and such, but John Cruz, Senior Housing Planner at MAPC, with our deep dive topic tonight for housing. So we'll be getting into that, but we have a few other agenda items too. So thank you both Planning Board and Ad-Hoc Comprehensive Plan Committee for taking the time this evening. We want to touch on, so if you recall, just to set this conversation in the context of our continuing work, last meeting we talked about a draft vision statement, which you all looked at and gave, I think, reasonable support for, but it will continue to evolve over the process and get better as we continue to talk with the community. This evening, we're going to talk about some initial draft goals, which are starting to be populated by our team within each of the comprehensive plan topic areas. And similarly to the vision statement, they are draft, initial conversation starters in nature. We want to share those with you tonight. If you have thoughts this evening, that's fine, but also sit with them and give us some thought. If you want to shoot us an email or send comments back through Larry, that's fine too. But those will be draft, really to set the stage for a conversation with the community over the fall, which will start next month in earnest, to use those as the basis for that conversation with the community. So we don't start really from the beginning, and we'll talk about where those draft goals are coming from and what they look like today. We also will just talk through the outline, which is coming together in a little more firm manner for the fall community engagement, and what October and November will look like specifically. And then John is here for our topic discussion on housing this evening. We'll touch briefly on next steps and out of your way. So Comp Plan, Ad-Hoc Committee members, we appreciate your time and efforts, and we appreciate the bonus thinking that we get from Planning Board members who are with us this evening as well. So we are continuing to truck along on this simplified comprehensive plan timeline, really at the front end of establishing the goals in the process, and that's what we have this evening, and we'll be continuing to refine those. As we move from, you know, really haven't even hit fall yet technically from the calendar's perspective, but as we move through the fall and shift towards winter, we'll also begin shifting toward the next level down in detail beyond the goals to think about strategies and actions, and really making the plan implementable. And then as we turn the page on this calendar year and move to 2025, we'll be really focused on drawing it all together as a plan and setting you all up for implementation. So that's the overall arc here, and we've got sort of feedback loops and community engagement occurring throughout, and are really getting the design for the fall, which will be the next focus of our engagement on both the vision statement and the draft goals. So let's dive right into the initial draft goals. And these are, first we'll just talk about where these are coming from, I think you can, based upon our conversations to date, you have an idea of where they are, but it's just good to reinforce that. So this initial version of the draft goals is really populated from the MAPC team and all the specialty areas and expertise you've seen across our group. They are based on the findings from community engagement, so from the forums, the stakeholder groups, the interviews, and the community survey, which we went through the results with you all as well. And then also, we're thinking about the existing conditions analysis that the team has gone through, the existing conditions brief that we shared with the committee, and trying to draw those together so that, as the plan suggests, that what we're thinking about for goals are really comprehensive in nature. As I mentioned, we have no pride of authorship, we're trying to really respond to what we've heard, but also set the stage for these conversations, but these are really the initial foundation for making the goals better over the next few months. The goals, just as the vision statement, are posited as draft really until the plan is finalized, so we will continue to make them better and accept feedback as long as people are giving it to us. And I would say though, with that in mind, as we shift toward thinking about strategies and actions, we do want to try to settle into a core set of goals, so that we're not, you know, come December throwing all the goals out and starting over. We want to really settle in, with your help, to a core set of goals where we feel a comfort level with shifting into that next level of detail with strategies and actions. And so that'll be based upon the feedback we hear from the community, the feedback we hear from you all, feedback from Larry and others in the town, as we start to circulate these with additional town departments, as we did with those initial interviews and conversations as well. So diagrammatically what this looks like, we've talked about that core vision statement, which is really at the center of the plan. It's also at a high level, as you recall, so it's language that the goals fit with and are consistent with, but the vision statement isn't giving us enough detail, so that's where the goals start to step in and provide detail for each of these topic areas. If you add a ring to this centralized diagram with the vision at the center and the topics around the periphery, the goals are really the closest level into that core, and then as we move outward again, you'll have the strategies which build out in further detail and really get into, you know, another level for each of the topic areas, and then actions from there. So it's vision statement at the core, goals building around that, and then the strategies and actions. And while we are thinking about them within each of the topic areas of the plan, we also understand that this isn't necessarily how the community thinks about their community. They don't think like, oh, like, I've got a land use problem, or I've got a transportation problem, it's just like challenges. So we're also trying to unpack this more plannerly language for the conversations that we'll be having this fall, so people can find their concerns and opportunities in these conversations. The other thing I'll say too is we're looking for synergies across all these topics as well, so that's a part of the benefit of a comprehensive plan is to look at all these together, so we're not just focused on what's best for land use, but how it relates to all of these topics. So if you're keeping track, and I know you're all checking these off as we go, but we have covered quite a few of these topics in the deep dive conversations so far. So we started with transportation, circulation and transit, we touched then on economic development in downtown, moved to land use. I guess we started long ago, almost at the beginning of this process, talking about community engagement and how we're going to focus this effort across the process. And then last meeting in August, we talked about the values vision statement and beginning of the initial goals, which are founded and nested in that vision statement. Tonight, we're talking about housing, and then we still have three more topics as we continue over the coming months that we're going to bring forward in some of these deep dive discussions. I think it'll be, the timing will work out just about right, where the discussion of goals, strategies and actions will still be being worked out as we do these deep dive conversations. So I think just as we land on the last one, so if we project out, we're probably thinking October, November, and perhaps December for the final of those. And then as we turn towards the new year, we'll probably not be having these deep dive topic discussions, but instead shift to implementation discussions. So the other thing to note about initial draft goals is that any good ideas start, it's mostly text at this point. As the ideas start to solidify and we get feedback on them, we do hope to bring in more graphics, photographs, images to dress up the plan and make it a little more accessible. But as you'll see this evening, it's a little bit of a wall of text and might feel at first impenetrable, but we'll talk through it briefly. I think at this point, the type, as I flip through these, I'm not going to go through them word by word, I'll hit probably pretty much what you see in bold on these slides, which I bolded today, so it's not bold on your handouts. But the type of feedback that would be helpful, if you reflect on these as a collection, like if you think one of these sets of topic goals is stronger relative to another, that would be good feedback to hear because we could model some of the others on the ones that you think are strongest. Or if you hear something that is not consistent with your understanding of what a goal should be for the town, or if you see a collection and think of something that's missing, those are the three kind of big types of feedback that would be very helpful at this point. So if we just start with that first conversation we had on the topics about transportation, circulation and transit, the goals are really about addressing congestion, improving walking, biking and rolling, which are related, those two ideas of congestion, finding other ways to get around, roadway safety, dependence and reducing dependence on single occupancy vehicles, thinking about the transit that is available and the ridership on those bus lines, encouraging more activity and density of use in certain locations of the town where it's strategically possible to support, with the hope again of reducing the number of vehicle trips in the town and therefore congestion, looking at ways to implement parking management studies and strategies, I mean, through looking and assessing parking needs in specific districts. And then the last one is kind of a catch-all to really hit that 10-year time horizon in the comprehensive plan of thinking about future transportation technology needs and how the town can be prepared to meet those needs. So those are the big ideas for transportation goals. And we think this is responsive to a lot of what we have heard, and I know that this is a lot to quickly get on board with and think about feedback, so maybe I'll just go through a few of these and you can go your own way, unless someone has items that immediately jump out in terms of feedback for transportation.
You're starting one thing, we're going to be here forever and once, so just...
I'll keep rolling a little bit then. No pun intended on transportation. Onto economic development. So we're thinking about goals such as building capacity and adding capacity for business engagement. So one example of that would be like a downtown business liaison to support businesses there and small businesses. Supporting the commercial tax base, which we've heard a lot about, and really digging into strategies to make that happen. Enhancing the industrial and medical clusters of the town, and thinking about the area environment for those districts, and how those relate to the local workforce development and supporting good jobs in the town for residents. We've heard a lot about attracting additional restaurants and small retail shops, particularly in downtown, but also in other locations. Addressing income disparities, that's one that comes from the data and the analysis for economic development that we saw pretty prevalent, and there were pretty pronounced racial disparities in income. And then addressing redevelopment opportunities throughout the town, and both thinking about them relative, in connection with the land use chapter, but also thinking about them as a means to enhance that tax base and address communities simultaneously. So those are our big goal ideas for economic development. And I'll just point out too, that hopefully you can imagine how there'd be really meaningful strategies that, so these are kind of, we're building detail from the vision statement, getting to a next level down, but then we would again be adding even more detail within the strategies about how the town is exactly going to do some of these things, or propose that, you know, you would have some meaningful ways to make action on these. Sitting in between economic development and land use is of course the specific downtown district, which is a focus of the town's efforts. Mixed-use development, which we know has been a topic in the past and continues to be a topic in the present, but providing some additional look at that and strategies for the town to look at, both in terms of the existing structures, but also thinking about properties that might be larger redevelopment opportunities to really shift toward a more pedestrian-oriented downtown, and actually identifying those properties through this process as well. Activating the downtown as a community and cultural center, and that's both in support of local businesses, but also thinking about events and public art that can occur there too, to really draw the community together through the downtown. Adopting design guidelines and developing an area-specific plan, which would go a level deeper than what we'll be able to do in the comprehensive plan, and that would be to really focus on what comes from new investments in the downtown, and then attracting local and regional business and really marketing the downtown and its opportunities for the types of businesses that you want to grow there. And then again, returning to parking and managing parking and wayfinding to help the downtown district function better and feel more convenient to people relative to some other places where parking is easier.
Just a quick one, just the adopting the design guidelines for Milford downtown, I just wondered where and how you're going to do that or what that amounts to, only because I've been on this board for 24 years, and I don't believe there's been one person that's come forward to change a downtown building to any extent. I mean, they're all using existing buildings, there's been no new construction on the outside, none of the owners that talk about all the issues seem to have any inclination to do much down there, but yet we keep hearing that. So I'm just wondering what that's going to look like, because as I said, 24 years, I've gotten none. The only thing I can remember that actually changed any physical outside was putting some awnings on, and we had one person that put on a cell tower on the side of a building. I mean, there's been changes of use where we've had to, where we've obviously had to have site plans that have come in, but the actual building itself has been none that I can think of.
Yeah, I think we'll, we have heard that and know that context, and thank you for reminding us and reinforcing it. I think it pushes us to push outside, like to try to think of new ideas that can help. Some of them might be thinking about some form of facade improvement program, where there's maybe a match of some kind, and also trying to identify where that match could come from, to, you know, either have low interest or no interest loans, or grants that could encourage property owners to improve their properties under certain guidance. Other approaches, I think, which I alluded to a little bit in discussion of these goals, is thinking, I hear, I've heard, and we've heard a fair amount about the sort of locked dynamics between the existing buildings and their, you know, changing to mixed use or reinvestment. And so I think one of the things that we want to dive into a little deeper is an analysis of properties and looking at where the larger redevelopment opportunities, not a existing building, but really a clearing of a smaller, less valuable building on a property, could transform into something that's a larger redevelopment, or potentially even the assembly of several parcels to do so. And I feel like we have not yet done that analysis, but that analysis might reveal some locations which then could point to specific strategies as well.
Yeah, there may be some of those. And again, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying with that statement, how are you going to get there? But yeah, there may be some of that, I could think of a few areas that that might be a possibility, especially as you extend the downtown from what's normally thought of, and probably extend it, you know, certainly down through the church and maybe perhaps past the Sacred Heart Church.
Okay. So you're, were we potentially maybe headed, could be fruitful in terms of...
Yeah, I'm not saying not do it, I'm saying I'd be careful with it if the thought process comes out that we're providing all these guidelines for downtown, and that's the only end that we're coming to is on existing buildings. I don't know that the money is well spent, let's put it that way, but in looking at what you're telling me in terms of possibilities of combining parcels and doing something else, then that certainly would be something I would want to. And obviously, the first one with the mixed uses is perhaps that would spur the need for the design guidelines if we were allowing that anyway. So I'm not throwing that statement out, I'm just saying we need to be careful with it.
Appreciate it.
One of the things we did with zoning, which I didn't like, was the district after downtown towards 109 East Main Street, the CB, we took away the residential aspect of it.
Terrible decision, in my opinion, yeah.
That was, I mean, we're looking for a thing, and now you take away the mixed use.
Yeah, I agree with you. In fact, I spoke at town meeting.
Yeah, I know you did.
Not very eloquent, let me go. I give it a shot.
Yeah. And I think that hopefully what you'll see in the conversation and presentation on housing with John in just a few minutes, is we can, I think, connect and strengthen the town's position relative to housing and 40Bs, which Larry was kind enough to share in some of the recent letters. We think if, for example, that we look at the zoning, come up with a way that we could frame through the zoning for downtown, potential for larger redevelopment opportunities on some of the properties with the allowance of mixed use with residential, that would strengthen the town's argument that you're doing proactive things for housing in terms of, you know, your ability to say no to 40Bs, and you'll hit the threshold potentially with the current cohort, but I think that would be helpful. And we'll articulate that a little bit more as we get there.
One of the things to Martha's point on the CB zone and residential uses in commercial zones, the problem with trying to do what we would see as a mixed-use development really wasn't possible because the bylaw didn't apply or didn't provide for residential units. It applied for dwellings, it applied for single-family houses, which makes no sense in a commercial zone. So if you want to encourage mixed use, you don't encourage new single-family houses along Route 16 in Milford in a commercial zone. So you may allow for residential uses above the first floor, which is what we tried to do downtown, that flopped too, but at least part of the problem was the poorly crafted old zoning language that didn't translate or transfer into a more modern concept of what mixed use really is. So we need to fix a bunch of stuff, even though the concept may make sense, a lot of the other clunky stuff that goes along with it's pretty rusty and outdated.
Yeah, great point. And so I think there's two little areas as we drill into those details, particularly with the zoning for downtown, and thinking of, you know, giving the town ideas about different approaches that you could take to that. Not saying that you'll love all of them or that you'll want to move forward with all them, but we're trying to explore ways to give you a new approach aside from ones that we know that you've tried in the past. All right, so moving from downtown to land use, which we talked about last meeting, and I think relates to the conversation we're just having too, so managing directing growth to appropriate areas of the town while maintaining the character of existing neighborhoods. I think that, you know, in light of what we're seeing in the 40B applications, that is not only applying to neighborhoods, but also to industrial districts, and, you know, trying to keep the character of the places that the town has set out in the past to really reinforce both the town's finances and the growth that you've been projecting for yourselves. And then also to continue to update the zoning bylaw, I mean, we've just talked about ways in which that will take place potentially in the types of recommendations that will focus on downtown or some other districts. Supporting a mix of uses and increasing residential density by right in specific locations, again, like the downtown, potentially in other commercial areas which are seeing more vacancies, to think about what could a mix, a more vibrant mix of uses look there. And encouraging industrial mixed use where appropriate, or what, you know, thinking about what mix of uses would work well in some of those occasions, to keep those districts fresh and enticing to businesses, and this relates a lot to the economic development as well. We've seen studies across the region, which MAPC has been a part of and led, which is looking at the loss of industrial land in the region and how important it is to retain industrial land, jobs that it creates, well-paying jobs with lower levels of qualifications that are needed.
I'm sorry, could I answer? So you just phrase loss of industrial area in the region, you mean other towns are reducing areas that are zoned for industrial?
Yeah, that in general, across the region, what we're seeing is industrial zoned land is shrinking, being encroached upon by other uses like residential.
That potentially put Milford in a good position?
Not with 40B. All these 40Bs, they're all in industrial zones. So between 40Bs on that end and the new legislation that made the town a two-family zone, it's almost like why bother to do any of this? Because we can't get there given the tools we're going to have left. So not to throw water on the heft.
But I could say instead, does it create an opportunity for Milford if there are businesses that require industrial zoning districts? There are fewer places for them to go, is there a shortage of, are there more people who want, businesses that want industrially zoned land than there is industrially zoned land in the region?
I think the short answer is yes, and we see that in the data. For the economic development data we presented in the existing conditions brief, the town has a very low industrial vacancy rate, and the commercial vacancy rate is higher. I think the industrial vacancy rate was somewhere around zero, if I recall correctly, and the commercial vacancy rate's somewhere around 10%. And so I think that there's potentially an expansion of industrial uses that could occur to backfill some of the vacant commercial lands and areas. I think that the more complicated discussion, which is a part of the 40B discussion, excuse me, is that the real estate economics of industrial land compared to other things like residential, is that the land, what you can extract in terms of land value and development value from a residential project is much higher than an industrial project. So that's why you see the conversion pressure on industrial lands.
Would you say that again?
The land used for industrial uses is, has less economic output for, on a per-square-foot basis than land used for residential use. So a property owner could purchase an industrial land and convert it to a residential land and make a profit on that conversion.
And make it faster.
Especially when it's 40B, there's less friction.
Less everything.
You can't produce the friction unfortunately, because the state is overriding most of the choices, so for them right now, it's the path of least resistance.
But in terms of community services, the residential's the most expensive?
Yeah.
Correct. Certainly more so than industrial. And that's just in terms of the loss of industrial land, that's one of the dynamics that is occurring region-wide, is that you're seeing loss of industrial land primarily to residential And then just to round out, the land use, we do have a go-all-around open space preservation priorities, and making sure that that's a part of land use considerations as well, and then also connects to the open space chapter as well. Housing goals, which we'll get into some of the data behind in the deep dive in a moment, but creating more opportunities for multi-family housing, both to meet demand, but I think also to help bolster the town's argument for being in safe haven from 40B. Increasing the share of affordable housing, and again, through policies that the town could adopt such as inclusionary zoning would help also make that case and strengthen it. All that is in support of diversifying the housing stock, which continues to diversify through these projects, but that can be also a process where through 40B you end up with the sort of upper end, high end of scale in terms of large multi-family projects, and the low-end scale, single-family projects, but what's referred to in the housing realms as the missing middle, those sort of housing projects which are between 3 and 15 units are what don't get built naturally by the market, so that's an area where the housing stock could be diversified. Maintaining aging properties, that's an issue where property owners will potentially need support, particularly those on fixed incomes, and thinking about programs or ways to do that. Mixed use residential opportunities, we've touched on, and then we also have heard a fair amount around addressing overcrowding, but also being sensitive to displacement in that conversation, and then also thinking about programs and opportunities to address the unhoused and help support the unhoused populations. So those are the housing goals overall. Cultural and historic resources, strengthening, understanding documentation of the resources and themes in the town, facilitating community belonging through those documentation efforts and strengthening that understanding, so broadening what's culturally relevant and significant to include all communities that are present in the town. Thinking about how zoning and regulations can support historic preservation, and how historic preservation is an important connection to economic development. Providing and promoting equitable access to cultural resources, the events, the... Providing and promoting equitable access to cultural resources, the events, the museums, the associations, et cetera. Celebrating cultural diversity, which I think is nested in some of those earlier goals, but also pulled out here specifically. Integrating public art and culture into public spaces in the town, both open spaces and plazas and the downtown specifically. And then expanding community and cultural events, which there's a rich tapestry of events already, but there's always room for more. And shifting, there's I think two more, natural environment and open space. A focus on water quality, we've heard a lot, both through protection and groundwater and the town's, you know, recent change to having the town water department. Resilience improvements and stormwater management and green infrastructure, moving forward with each of those aspects of management of the natural environment. Thinking about the potential for small-scale publicly accessible parks and sort of the equitable distribution of, you know, locating where those opportunities might be in the town. Access to open space through walking and biking connections, and the rail trail's a great example of that. And that also connects to congestion, reduction of vehicle trips. And then priorities for unprotected open space and really both identifying where those are and what the lack of protections may be. And then strengthening amenity accessibility inclusiveness to those resources which already Lastly, on community facilities and services, continuing to think about ways to improve the capital improvement processes and get in front of those capital investments which are in front of the town over these time horizons. Thinking about, continuing to evaluate current department structures and organization for the efficient delivery of services, thinking about where the town is today, but also where it might need to be in the next 10 years to make some of those changes and be ready for it. And then also thinking about resident outreach and accessibility. We've heard a fair amount about that, that there's certain populations that feel that they are not able to access town resources or town policies or decision-making as well. Environmental sustainability and resiliency for the town, both in terms of its facilities but also services, that's also, you know, includes fiscal and financial sustainability, but also environmental sustainability. And then connects to the next goal of long-term financial resilience and sustainability, which has been, I think, a cornerstone of the way the town has been operating to date. Supporting boards and committees and making sure that they're as effective as possible and giving the volunteers that are part of them the support they need. And then lastly, focusing on inclusivity and equitable access to those services the town provides. So that was a lot. Ran through it quickly, but if you have any overarching reflection on running through those, if you think there's a standout among those topics where the goals really seem to, you know, fit together better than another, we'd be happy. Or if you think one of them seems weak to you, we'd be happy to take a look at that. That's helpful feedback.
This is my first time attending one of these meetings, so I apologize if y'all have discussed this before. And I don't, and I'm not sure that what I'm about to say actually fits in the concept of the comprehensive plan. And I'm by no means suggesting that we at this, that you folks that are on the ad hoc committee could even consider addressing it, but just, there's a piece that, to me, feels missing, but maybe it doesn't belong in this kind of a plan, is about an evaluation of our government structure. You know, is three-member quarter selectmen the correct one? I'm a believer that every community should have a charter, better clarification of the town administrators' roles. I just feel like that's kind of a missing piece in this community. But I'm not sure it belongs in this plan, and I would not in a million years suggest we start, even if it belongs, could belong here, that we introduce it now. I'm just mentioning it.
I do think that general topic is appropriate and is touched on here on the slide that's up on the screen on the second bullet, which is kind of evaluating department structures and organization and how to best deliver the services that the residents need. In some processes, we hear, like, there has been a focus on a particular aspect of like how things could change, and then we reinforce that through the planning process. I agree with the general sentiment that we don't want to introduce wildly different ideas through this process, but I think maybe point to the need for continuous study of these structures to make sure they're appropriate.
Yeah, because the scope of work is pretty clear in terms of being able to mention it, as you say, but not necessarily get in-depth.
I'm sorry. Was that a question? Okay, everybody looked at me.
We didn't know if you wanted.
No, I'm good. I didn't want to spend time on it. I just wanted a road out there to be provocative. Kidding.
Everything's good, yeah. Appreciate that it's a lot, but if you want to take, you know, as your, if you have any thoughts, certainly, you know, let us know, either through Larry or directly to us. We'd be happy to take your thoughts. And again, the idea here is that these are, instead of us showing up to a meeting and saying like, "We've heard a lot from you all and, you know, we've got some ideas," we're actually going to show up to a meeting and say, "For these topics, we think these are the things that we've heard," the format of goals, and then ask people to help us make them better, help us fill in gaps, or help us, you know, let us know that this is the wrong idea and we can shift off it if that is the case. So that will be through the community outreach, which we'll talk about in a moment for what's in shape for the fall, before we head over to John for housing. So we really, in the fall engagement, will continue to build awareness of the plan. We are not under the impression that everyone knows about the comprehensive plan in the community just yet, so we do want to continue to build awareness of it and hope that new residents will become involved over the course of the fall. We will be gathering feedback focusing on the draft vision statement, which we saw last time, and the initial goals, which we just went through. And really, as I just said, sort of say, here's what we think so far, everything's up for discussion, and please let us know your feedback. We are getting organized presently around a series of topic-related meetings where we will be inviting, they'll be open, all meetings will be open to the general public. Anyone who wants to come or can take the time will be invited to do so. We'll be sending general emails out through the emails we've gathered through this process so far. We'll also be, as we get organized, just posting the general dates and times and venues on the project website. We'll share them with Larry to get on the town's website. We'll work with you all to get the word out as best we can. But for these meetings, we are also thinking about specific, either individuals or organizations that have an interest in transportation or community facilities or historic and cultural resources. So if you have, many of which we've already done, at least an interview with some of those folks in those different stakeholder areas, but if you do have someone in mind, a resident who's super interested in a certain topic, or a neighbor or a certain group, you can share that with us as well, and we'll make sure that they're invited to these specific conversations. Right now, we're targeting that they would start about a month from now, mid-October, and go through the end of October. And we'd probably be holding, show up for, in the morning and stay through lunchtime or so and host a series of meetings across those mornings. And also, just kind of hit the street is the plan too. Like, we don't anticipate that we're going to get everyone showing up on a weekday morning to come talk to us about the things that we want to talk about. So for example, one of the ideas for transportation, which I think is very tangible, is actually go to some of the MWRTA stops and literally just say like, "Can we have a conversation with you?" And just intercept people as they go about their daily lives to see what their transportation suggestions are. And we'll try to do a similar approach to that across the various topic areas. So kind of meet people where they are on the street and see what kind of conversations we can have.
Talking to people on the bus was one of the things that we discussed for the MVP thing.
Great.
So I would certainly be happy to work on that with you. And we do have Portuguese and Spanish-speaking people on the committee, so.
Excellent. Yeah, we should.
That would be helpful.
I think our community engagement team is, has been in contact.
Yes, with Danielle.
Yes, with Danielle and the MVP 2.0 program. Now that this is starting to take shape, we should definitely connect and join forces to see how we can both, not, we can both get benefit from these, but also not duplicate that.
Right, exactly.
Elizabeth, excuse me, what group are you speaking of?
So the MVP 2.0 is a grant that we got, and it's a group made up of some, like 10, 12, 10 or 12 of us, half municipal employees, half community liaisons, that it's all about getting the opinions of the people in the community that aren't typically heard from.
What does MDP stand for?
Municipal Vulnerability.
Thank you. Oh, I thought it was MDP.
No, Municipal Vulnerability. So yes, it's the, it's, the overarching is that it's about resilience. It's getting the town to be more resilient to climate change.
Oh, very good.
So we have increasing storms is typically how we've been looking at it. How do we help the more vulnerable people in our community bounce back when we have...
That's a great reminder, and I will make sure that we get something that looks like in the next week or so. I think the time is just right to reach out and connect with you and Danielle. All right, so that's the fall community conversations. So we're thinking about pairing these mostly in ways that we think make sense, but have conversations that we can have portions of our team come out and engage in this way. So these are the types of pairings that we talked about. And then also have a few more, less, the first four are really topically organized around the conversations as we presented them in this planning effort. The last three are more connecting with voices which are typically less represented in these types of processes. So thinking about, we've already had one small business focus group as a part of the visioning, so either having the same group back or trying to expand that small business focus group, having a Spanish-speaking specifically focused group and a probably a Portuguese-Brazilian or Brazilian-Portuguese speaking focus group as well. And then a youth-focused group. And we've had a fair amount of connection and contact with the youth center and thinking that a partnership with them for some sort of event would be a good thing. So these are all, the idea here is that these are less formal, kind of smaller discussions to give feedback on the information that we've just presented. Probably, I would say with some thought put into how the language that was presented this evening can become a little less technical and more conversational, but to get the same ideas across so we can have these conversations. Then we will have also two more traditional and formal meetings, which are going, are likely going to land in November on one of those four dates that are identified here. And so the idea is that we will focus, because we have not heard as much and seen as much involvement on the non-English speaking portions of the population, we would have a focused in-person session. Probably what we're thinking is that would likely be hosted in a local church, not a town hall, because we've heard that local churches are a more comfortable space for those populations to attend. And that would be the same content that would be covered in an English-speaking session, but one of the things, one of the feedback we saw in the mostly English-speaking attendees that came out to our visioning session in May is that there was a preference for a Zoom meeting. So we'll go ahead and do a Zoom meeting in a couplet with this Spanish and Brazilian-speaking meeting or Portuguese-speaking meeting on one of, you know, they'll probably end up as a pair on one of those four dates. And then in addition to all of these small group conversations, these two more formal sessions, about the time when the small group conversations get rolling mid-October, we'll release a second community survey, which is focused on the vision statement and the draft goals. And that was where we had, I think it was in the neighborhood of 600 respondents for the first community survey. So we're hoping to have at least repeat that success potentially, but maybe even expand as we'll, in these community conversations, also be inviting people who do come out to talk with us in this way to, you know, we'll have project cards that they can get the QR code for the survey and get word out that way to maybe pass along to the neighbors.
Josh, are you still looking at the 17th and 18th, potentially, in Upper Town Hall?
Yes, potentially. We're thinking about some other venues for those as well, but do not have any of the venues confirmed yet. So I think having the Upper Town Hall as a fallback is a good thing.
Yeah, it'd just be nice to know sooner rather than later if we don't need to reserve them any longer, because the reason I reserved them so early is because there are other people looking to reserve them. So I didn't want to wait.
The town library has a really great room downstairs.
Perfect.
But you have to reserve that early as well.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll start talking about the town library. We also thought potentially, in addition to the youth-focused event, potentially the youth center or the senior center might be reasonable places to reach out to, which we've been in contact in this process previously. And then also the, like, you know, it's the Veterans Building, where the historic and cultural resources folks are, historic and cultural.
Memorial Hall.
Thank you, yes, thank you. Memorial Hall would be another, particularly for that conversation around.
Library for us whole people.
Cultural resources.
Memorial Hall's not accessible.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a ramp there. We did a ramp there.
Yeah.
Well, this is, one of our top priorities is to get the logistics and all these squared away so we can start promoting the events, because we are only about a month out. So that's, that's one of the things that's weighing me down, so we will get that squared away quickly. Yeah, and that's, any thoughts or questions about, or suggestions about the fall approach to help continue to engage with the community and get feedback on all this? All right. With that, let's round out our discussion night with a dive into housing with John.
Thank you, Josh. My name is John Cruz. I'm a senior housing and land use planner at MAPC, and I'm here to talk to you guys about an extremely non-controversial issue tonight. So we're onto housing, and everybody has a lot of big feels around housing. And I'm very hyper-aware that that's the situation. I'm looking forward to really a frank and productive conversation with everyone tonight. We took a look at a lot of different housing challenges from the conversations that we've had with folks in public meetings, from things that we've been able to discern kind of from the data. And what we found, in the big picture and the macro, is that the concerns that folks have brought to us are very much represented in the data, regardless of what the data source is or what the data point is. Everyone seems to kind of be on the same page about the challenges and what needs to happen. A lot of these are going to be similar to what was reflected in the draft goals that are designed to kind of address this. And what we see is the challenges is that it's expensive. Everything housing-wise is expensive. Doesn't matter if you're trying to buy, if you're trying to rent, if you're trying to, you know, take another pill after taking a look at your property tax bill when it comes in the mail or something like that. It's expensive for everybody. And there's not enough supply to help balance some of that out. We see there's a general lack of rental options. There's not a lot of starter homes for young families that want to move into town. There's not a lot of downsizing options for empty nesters and retirees. There's not a lot of mechanisms really at all for multifamily development other than 40B. Maintaining older homes is a challenge for folks as they try to age in place and you realize maybe you can't do as much as you used to do, and you say, "Well, this will probably be fine and I'll deal with it later." And sometimes it's fine, and sometimes it's not. Overcrowding issues, just so everybody is aware, and we're talking the same language, when we talk about overcrowding, we're going to be talking about it the same way the census defines it, which is more than one person per room in a home. And we've heard a lot of anecdotal evidence about people who believe that there is overcrowding in houses, and the census data shows that there are likely a few hundred homes that are overcrowded by that definition. Additionally, we talk about homeless. Additionally, we talk about homeless, in Milford, specifically in Milford. Obviously, it's a very challenging, it's a challenging number to get right. There's a high margin of error, but we feel like on, on the low end, it's 100, on the high end, it's 300, and that's just based on census counts. In reality, it's likely much higher than that. And then homelessness, addressing the, the unhoused population in Milford, understanding a little bit more around what that is and what that looks like and how many folks we're dealing with. And right now, we're in a fact-finding process of trying to learn what we can from the school district, trying to learn what we can from the continuum of care at the county, and get a good idea as to what depth this is affecting folks. But we understand this is an issue that we need to address head-on. What we do know is that a household needs an average income of a little bit more than $160,000 to be able to purchase a single-family home. We're going to do a dive into that in a little bit and show you a little bit more about what those numbers look like. There's close to 11,000 homes in Milford, and it's about 43% of the micro-region of all the nearby cities and towns. And in the existing conditions report, it breaks down what those houses, what those housing numbers look like and what the numbers are like in the neighboring towns. So lots of residential clustering here. 40B developers are likely to target either vacant or industrial land. We know that, that the proof's in the pudding on that one. And slow population growth is projected, based on the numbers that we have at MAPC. So we're looking at seeing a slight increase over the next 10 to 15 years. Nothing too substantial. That doesn't change the fact that there's still housing challenges that need to be addressed with the populations today. Very few multifamily units have been developed in the last 20 years. All of them are 40Bs. From, from what I can tell, there may be a few that were gone through a permitting process at some point. Yeah, you're shaking your head, no. The, the data that we have that shows that doesn't show any multifamily that's produced, so I don't, yeah, so it would all be through 40B the way the permits look. So when we get to that portion of the data and it shows no multifamily has been produced, that's permits, that's not real numbers on the ground. So we're going to be doing some work in the future to make sure the 40Bs are counted and talked about in a different way, so we understand what really has been built. And of course, permit data is usually a proxy for that, and 40B throws a little bit of a wrench into how we talk about that.
John, the housing, housing units, the census is 11,922.
Yes, so.
Yeah, so it's not close to 11,000, it's 11,922.
What data set is that?
2020 census, year-round housing units.
So this, this may be the most recent American Community Survey data from 2020.
Oh, maybe that's what it is.
That could be what it is. There, there's usually little discrepancies in, in things like that.
Yeah, because the 11,922 is what SHI's compared to for the 10%, 40B. So I would think it'd be more helpful to use the census data.
We can certainly do that, and we'll talk a little bit about how the, the housing numbers have evolved a little bit over the years. Thank you for pointing that out. The last point on the, the list here is that most of the housing stock is over 60 years old. And that's pretty consistent regardless of, of the housing type. There's a lot of older homes, and older homes need a lot of work. And that kind of brings us back to the point about trying to age in place, trying to keep up an older home and working with all the challenge that go along with that, physical, financial, et cetera. So this one, I think, is a little bit different. 10,942, I think that's that same number where we got the almost 11,000 from. Regardless of 10,900 or 11,900, the breakdown remains more or less the same. About a third of the homes have children in them, about a third of them are retirees. Only 9% were built since 2000, and of course, that doesn't include the 40Bs like we talked about. 66% of the homes were built between 1940 and 1999, so that mostly post-war housing boom that we saw in the second half of the 20th century. Two-thirds of the housing is single-family, and roughly the same amount is owner-occupy. That's a Venn diagram that almost completely overlaps with single-family and homeownership. Of course, there are some single-family rentals, there are some condos that are ownership and things like that. But by and large, odds are if you're living in a single-family home in Milford, you, you own that home. This gives us the, the unit breakdown that I talked about before, as far as what sort of trend things are moving in. Again, this is permit data, so it doesn't include the 40Bs. But what it shows us is that every single housing type has, has decreased, aside from single-family attached, since the, the last comprehensive plan was completed. And when we look at the, the number change over here in the second-to-last column on the right, this shows, we, we just wanted to take a look and see what the, the housing, what has happened in housing development since the last comprehensive plan was developed. So that plan has all these numbers. We took those numbers and said, "What does it look like today and how much has, have things changed?" And excluding the 40Bs, there are 214 fewer housing units than there were in 2000, and it's a change in negative 2%. And you can see in the, the last column there where everything kind of breaks down, and two-unit buildings down 23%, three-to-four-unit buildings down 15%, single-family homes down almost 1%. And this just further exacerbates the, the concern about housing availability.
Can I ask a question?
Me too.
What's single-family attached?
Single-family attached is like a townhome.
Isn't that a potentially two-unit or three-to-four-unit building?
No, because what will happen is the, the lots will be smaller and the homes will be built directly to the lot line. So they, they can be, they can be built that way.
Well, Walden Woods are all two-unit laterally attached, so they're all townhouses. Well, there's one that's, a single-family stands alone. So Walden Woods PRD is...
I, I don't know where Walden Woods is.
Off of Cedar Street.
I still don't get it.
It's, it's a, it's a very technical difference between a duplex and a single-family attached.
It's two dwelling units that normally would be separate, but they're, they have a common wall.
Two-unit building that we're calling it something different?
So Country Club Estates.
Okay.
Country Club Estates is a PRD. Every unit there is a four-unit townhouse.
So those are called single-family attached?
Yeah.
I would think he's probably counting them that way. I'm not sure how they worked out whether that would be a three or four-unit building or not.
My underst-
It's a single-family attached.
My understanding is that this data comes from the Census Bureau and it's done through a, a survey of communities as far as what their permit data is. So this wouldn't be coming directly from citizens, the way that you might get your census or community survey in the mail, and you say, "I make this much per year, I have this education, et cetera." So this should be coming from, from local governments in some way.
Yeah, so the number's high.
So a duplex comes in under single-family attached?
No, it probably comes in.
No, that'd be a duplex.
Well, it depends on how it's done.
Single-family attached is probably planned unit developments where there's multiple units within the building. They, they're calling them single-family attached. So any of the planned unit developments we have got put in there.
Because you go down the list there, the third one, fourth one down's two-unit building.
Right, so what's the difference?
Right, because a, a standard old-time duplex is an up-and-down duplex. You have a unit upstairs and a unit downstairs.
That's not at all what I know of as a, when I say duplex, I mean one house.
Side-by-side.
Side-by-side.
But that's, but that's not necessarily a duplex.
So if it's a side-by-side and it's a duplex, like I know of a duplex, like we have, we have, that's, the, our whole bylaw is about duplexes, right? The side-by-side, you have to have one entrance?
Well, if you're, if you're doing a duplex, if you're building a new duplex in an RA zone, yes.
Right, so does that type of building fall under single-family attached or two-unit building?
Typical.
Depends.
Yeah.
It depends on, because before the most recent change to our zoning bylaw, you didn't have to have just one main entrance. So they were building duplexes and then condo-ing them out. So they're basically a townhouse. That's the problem, is that nobody, especially in Milford, nobody pays attention to the technical language in the building code about what's a townhouse and what's not. And they don't require one-hour separating walls between the units.
I'm wondering how this, I, I'm wondering how something falls into one as opposed to another.
Well, this data substantiates what I was just explaining. Because that's how, how could you have 1,100 single-family attached units in Milford if they're not talking about townhouses? That there, there's no way you can do that.
That they would be talking about townhouses. Usually, to, to answer your question from a technical perspective, usually the way that works is that the, the parcels are split to be the size of the, the townhouse, regardless of if they have shared walls or not. So the lots are just much smaller than they are.
We don't have parcels.
Right.
They're not parcels. There's no parcel required in a planned residential development.
Right, so that, that's got to be how they're being counted then.
But the parcel part of it, the land part of it, doesn't have anything to do with it. It's the structure and how it's built. Because you could still have a two-family house that's upstairs, downstairs, and they, if they're crafty enough, they can condo it out. But that's not going to be considered single-family attached townhouse. Now legally, it might be a condo-ed-out unit, but that's not a townhouse, because typically the townhouse is-
Townhouse is side-by-side.
Side-by-side.
Right, so a duplex, the way I know of a duplex, would be a townhouse.
That's because you, you've been affected by Milford. So it's an environmental thing.
The other way up and down, there are two-family, or three-family, or four-families. They're not.
But if you go to Country Club Estates, those four-unit buildings that Fafford built are townhouses.
Yes.
They don't look like it, but they are, they're, they are laterally attached, because they back into each other. They're the crossbar.
Right.
They count for four?
Huh?
It's a four.
They count for four in the statistics, correct?
They would count for four as part of the 1,100. That's why there are 1,100 of them.
Okay, that's what, yeah, all right.
I think that's right.
I think you finally, I think you finally answered my question.
Well, it's, it's your environmental background.
Well, I know, but you need to talk to my environmental background, because my environmental background is the same as all of these guys.
Well, yeah, but not everybody understands it that way.
You'll have to explain it to me.
Generally speaking, a duplex, what most people think of that, it would be a unit on top of another unit, and another one would be a triple-decker or a triplex, depending on what.
That's not at all what Milford, if you're talking, in Milford, a duplex is side-by-side, two-
Two-family, or three-family, or four-family, a stack.
That's, in Milford, just so you know, when you're talking to people and you say duplex-
Same framing, yeah.
When you say duplex, they're thinking side-by-side.
Is there a word that would mean one on top of the other as opposed to something?
Two-family.
Two-family?
Three-family, four-family.
Yeah.
Triple-decker.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the context.
Yeah, because, because technical precision doesn't have anything.
Yep, exactly.
The number on the bottom is the one that counts anyways.
The one, the, the number on the bottom is generally the one that counts, but at the same time, understanding where, where those numbers come from, you know, the nuance is important here. I really understand what that means.
I mean, this board should be well-aware. I mean, the only thing that we've seen, if you're looking at 2022 and the percent change, is most, most of the housing units have been planned unit developments that have come in here, which is why you're seeing 118.6%, and the others went down.
Right.
That's what most of them got put into.
Exactly.
However they count them.
With the Bear Hill Village?
Yep.
Where they're all separate from each other, those are still, those would still be under single-family attached, right? Because technically, they're not all on the same property?
No, detached.
They would be detached.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's, it's about the structure, it's not about the-
It's just a town, that's, single-family attached is a townhouse.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay.
That's all you need to know.
Okay.
But you really, you ought to go up to Walden Woods.
That's all I was asking.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
That's exactly what I was, that's exactly what her and I were trying to figure out.
But you really need to take a drive up to Walden Woods.
I think we're good.
Fantastic. So the residual message is that with the exception of the planned unit developments in the 40Bs, every housing type has been losing numbers for the last 20-some years.
There's no more land, that's-
There's, there's no more land, but at the same time, houses are going away and something is happening with the land. You know, we, we saw a reduction in 50-some single-family homes, 52 single-family homes over the last 20 years. So something, something happened to those homes. I couldn't tell you what you guys might know.
Single-family attached.
Yeah, maybe, potential.
Throw them down so they can put a subdivision.
Duplex, right.
Or, or to put a-
You went to the zoning board and got, I mean, 52? We've had close to that in 20 years.
Absolutely.
Sure. They've been given the permits to put a duplex in.
Sure.
Probably so.
Because I don't think the single-family homes went by that much. That's what happened, is they got-
Years I've been on the board, to put a subdivision in, you're ripping, you're ripping the house down to make the, make the access to the plant, to the property.
Sure.
So you're not, so the, the single-family detached that was minus 52 doesn't mean that there was a net loss of 52 units.
Correct, that means it was a net loss of 52 structures.
Fifty-two structures disappeared so they could redevelop it for something else.
Right, into one of the other numbers.
Right.
More likely than not.
It could, it, I could conceive of it would be industrial, commercial, if it was an existing block of wronged use.
Okay.
Could we clarify that units means individual housing units? In other words, a two-unit is two units?
Yes.
Okay, so-
It means a, a structure that houses two.
That's not the number of housing structures.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yes, and so the-
So a two-unit building would be 600 structures?
No, a two-unit building is-
Number of units.
Number, yeah, that's, that's the number of units. Yep, so 600-ish buildings. Yeah, yes.
Well, two-unit buildings, you say, you call it a two-unit building, and then, but, but it's on the column that the 1240 is under, is number of units.
Right.
So, right, 600 is 40.
So the number of units in a two-unit building. It's a, yeah.
Yeah, you have to do the math.
Good for clarification, but yes.
640, two-unit building, yes.
Most of the two-unit buildings are in Broad Street, Franklin, all that.
Yep.
I'm glad that's not an odd number.
You know, that's what we're talking about, the shared wall, and just getting rid of half of it. Lots of parts of the country look like that. All right, moving on. So where we're at is that, you know, a little bit under 6% on the SHI. We know that there are close to 4,500 homes, households in Milford that are, would qualify for affordable housing, subsidized housing at 80% AMI. And that is close to, close to 50% of all households, it's 44%. So the reality of the situation is roughly half of the people, roughly half of the households in town would qualify for subsidized affordable housing. And the way these numbers shake out, Emma, can you go to the next slide? Josh, I think it's easier to explain with the chart. So in blue, we have the median household income in Milford. In pink, we have the, the income needed to afford median rent. That number is probably a little bit low, because that's based on, on census numbers for what people report that they pay for rent. That's a little bit less than what you would expect to pay if you were going out to the market to rent a place today. When you look at that, it's give or take 2,020 bucks, which puts you almost exactly at that $89,000, $90,000 figure in blue. In green, that's the $162,000, $163,000 figure we talked about before, about what you would need to buy a home with a conventional mortgage. A conventional mortgage means, of course, you're paying a 20% down payment, and you don't have to buy any kind of like additional insurance, mortgage insurance, or anything like that. If you're using a non-conventional mortgage, such as a VA mortgage or an FHA mortgage, you only need to put down 3%. Of course, that's going to make your payment higher, because what you owe is not 80% of the property, it's 97%, which means your income needs to be higher. So if you have a low-down payment mortgage, your household income needs to now be 181,000, give or take, in order to afford the, the medium single-family home sale price in town. Obviously, condos are going to be a little bit cheaper, and there's going to be fluctuations in the market and things like that. Where we get these numbers is we take a look at what the, the tax rate is in town, we look at what the current mortgage interest rates are, we estimate things like renting utilities. And these numbers, these thresholds, are the amount that you need to hit before you become what's called housing cost burdened, which means you're not spending more than a third of your pre-tax income on your rent or on your mortgage. So with that being the litmus test, that's the, the place where if you want to rent an apartment, the landlord's going to say you don't make enough money to rent here at a third of your income, and while banks and mortgage companies will underwrite loans that will allow you to be housing cost burdened, most of them will not, or they'll take very careful consideration in making an exception. Exceptional credit scores, good history of repayment, things like that. But really, what this means is there's a huge gap, and you can see right on here the gap between the blue and the green, the blue and the yellow, and that's how much more households need to be able to make to afford the housing, and that's how big the mismatch is. And that, the gap between those is the, the housing affordability income gap for these different groups. And as you can see, it's, it's, it's pretty stark. It's, it's pretty stark, and, and the folks that live here simply don't make enough to be able to afford a new housing if they were looking on the market today.
Can I ask a question on that?
Please do.
Because you've done this elsewhere.
Yeah.
Is that markedly different than other cities and towns? I mean, I would guess if you go to Weston, it might be totally different, but in, in terms of other, other towns in and around this area and stuff, is that markedly different than what you see elsewhere?
I, I think this is very consistent with numbers we see throughout the MAPC region. The actual incomes and costs may vary a little bit, but at the end of the day, the, the gaps are still very substantial throughout.
The only reason why I, I asked that question is that we're looking at this, and we're looking at this as a comprehensive plan in Milford, but that issue is not a Milford, per se, issue. That is a Massachusetts issue that the state continues to throw dots at, thinking that they have an answer to it, which I tend to believe they don't, but I'll leave it at that. But anyways, I, you know, I, I wonder where it go, where this conversation goes, knowing what we, as a town, are able to control in terms of the issues with it, that, that's my only point.
Sure, no, and I think it's a great point to raise, and your hypothesis, I believe, is correct. We see these similar issues all throughout the region, and what we really want to do here is illustrate how challenging the, the housing situation is. Because they're, they're startling numbers. It surprised me the first time I ran this analysis, and it continues to surprise people in community meetings and board meetings like this, when I bring them to folks. And, you know, we have a lot of qualitative thoughts and feelings and understandings and things that we know from, you know, children or relatives or friends that have maybe tried to find housing in the last couple of years, and they've talked about how difficult it is, and people keep getting underbid, and you gotta jump on stuff really quickly. And this is a, what I feel like is a little bit more of a, an illustration that shows you really how wide, in a quantitative way, that gap is between the two of them. Josh, could you go to the previous slide, please?
If I, can I take a liberty?
Please do.
So I didn't, I didn't make this observation with John earlier, so I don't mean to throw him a curveball, and it's a little off, off housing topic, but what jumps out to me here, you were talking about how this relates to other places, is that the, the median household income is quite low compared to other municipalities in the region. And so I, I think another way to think about this disparity is how we can address that part of the bar chart relative to other topics, too. So the economic development chapter, we were talking about, you know, good jobs for residents in the town, and how do we make that happen, and what kind of supports or programs or regulations might make a difference there. I think if you, if we did a more substantial comparison of these numbers across the region, I think what you'd find is that the housing numbers actually might be relatively affordable compared to some other cities and towns in terms of what is needed to purchase here. But the, the median income, I think, is one of those areas where we could also potentially make a positive impact with what we, what we are thinking about for the planning.
That would be interesting, let's see where that would go. I also, median income comes from state data, is that where we, we get that from?
That comes from the US Census Bureau.
US Census Bureau?
Yeah, it's part of the American Community Survey, yes. So on, on the previous slide, it lists out what all those, those numbers and the gaps are, and really just talks about how much is needed to afford anything. So it, it breaks down the household income, it breaks down how much you need to buy a single-family home with 20% down or 3% down, a little bit more affordable with the condos, with the 126 and 138, and roughly $74,000 to afford the rent. But either, either way, it really shows really how, what that price point is, like how much the, the household income needs to be, so you can take a look at what the options that are available. And really, with the way the market is, there's not a whole lot of stuff that comes on the market, and when it comes on the market, it gets snatched up pretty quickly. So there's a, a great deal of challenges that folks have, being able to find housing, find available housing, and of course, afford that housing as well. Thoughts, questions, concerns on any of this? All right, we can keep moving forward then. So really, the, the questions that we have with all of the absorption of all of this is, what really strikes you about this? And I'm, I'm really grateful for the comments that we've had so far. What should we kind of focus on when we're thinking about, we're continuing our analysis of housing patterns and policies? What are the other things we should really be mindful of as we go ahead and do that? And what should be made, what else should be part of the long-term vision and goals for housing, based on what you all know? You've seen the draft goals, we've talked a little bit about data and challenges and affordability and things like that. So this is where I'd like to, to leave the conversation and turn it back over to the board for all of your thoughts, and please be as frank as you feel is necessary in sharing.
Before I forget, John, I could, can I just suggest that occasionally you mention somewhere in the text, or as a footnote or something, which data set you're using, whether it's census or the American Family Survey, that, and that's why there might be discrepancies otherwise in people's heads, like mine, when I look at these, say, wait a second, that's coming from a different source.
Sure, of course.
So just to make sure that things jive all the way through.
Of course, and then we do have that, I just didn't include it in the PowerPoint, to make sure that we have all that moving forward.
I don't know how much you all are, think that we have a homeless population, and I know we do have some, but I would think it's relatively small, based on, no, it's not as small as I think it is. That's, that was what I, Lisa Kincaid had mentioned, and a lot of times, they only find it through the schools.
I didn't realize that either, Elizabeth.
Yes.
But one of the things that I'm coming across more and more is that we have very severe overcrowding, and we're in situations constantly where we can't really allow for the overcrowding, because it's a safety issue, but the other alternative is homelessness.
And often families.
Families.
Yeah.
Very often families.
Yeah.
So, you know, that, trying to solve that part of the housing problem is, is the thing that I think I'm the most aware of at this point. And, you know, I know, we had discussed before how Milford went away from the multi-unit housing because of, because it was putting a strain on the schools, and clearly, the strain on the schools came about anyway, it just took a different form, so I feel, I guess, really strongly that that's something that we need to work on, and somewhat quickly.
Not surprisingly, with you 100%, I mean, regardless of position on sort of the political issues, kind of, I mean, that, that, that family deserves safe, decent housing.
Yeah, I guess just to clarify, just, they may be categorized, the family may be categorized as homeless, doesn't mean that they don't have a roof over their head, but the situation of the families that are staying on Fortune Boulevard, right, at the, at the hotel, that they are, those families are categorized as homeless, because they're living in-
The shelter.
In, in that shelter.
Didn't even know.
So that's, so that's why our numbers, in a sense, are high, right? And I think most of the time, we consider homeless as not having a roof over your head, but there is that scenario, that is why it's considered that way, so.
There, there is a larger number of families living in cars than you would, than you would have any idea.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I think every year, when, when we get those numbers in the school system, we're a little surprised.
Yeah, I would say generally, for nearly all communities throughout this country, and probably for, or our neighboring countries as well, the, the homeless figures are much greater than what we think they are. The way that we define homelessness in the United States is if you do not have a fixed permanent address. So that includes folks sleeping in their cars, folks sleeping in shelters, folks being put up in hotels temporarily, and it also includes people that are just kind of crashing on a friend's couch until they wear out their welcome, and kind of just move around like that. So it's, it takes a lot of forms and a lot of faces, and a lot of communities believe they don't have a problem, because they're not seeing people, you know, sleeping with a blanket outside of the gas station at night or something like that.
Just in front of the town hall.
Before you were talking about one, one per room, is that, if you have more than one person in the room, is that considered overcrowding?
If there is more than one person living in a, if there's more than one person per room living in a home, that is considered overcrowding.
Is that bedroom or room?
No, that is room.
It's just the number of rooms.
That is the number of rooms.
But that doesn't, that doesn't coincide with all of the codes, whether it's building code, or housing code, or health code, in terms of how you determine the legal occupancy of a space.
It is not, because all of that stuff is handled a little bit more at the hyper-local level, and the census just developed a method that says we're gonna apply this.
The census isn't looking to answer that question, Larry, that's got nothing to do with what they care about.
But that, but that number is misleading.
I grew up in four-and-a-half bedrooms, there was twelve of us.
That would be, that would be overcrowded, for sure.
I wouldn't, it wasn't, no, that's, people now are spoiled. People, people all lived in that, when I grew up, that's what, that's what people grew up in, they did like that.
Yeah, but that was, but that was-
I realize I spoil juice.
That was, that was all your immediate family.
Yes.
That's not the way it is anymore.
That's what he said, is, well, it doesn't matter.
The census doesn't differentiate between family members and non-family members.
How many, how many families do you know that have 10 children?
Now, no.
None, so if there, if there's more than, if there's more than one per, so our house is, it gotta be 10 rooms, right?
Yeah.
Well, not, I'm just, an average house is, is probably has-
That's the way they build the houses nowadays.
Right, and so they don't have 10 people in there.
But based on the rationale that the census use in, apparently, the majority of the housing in Milford's gonna be overcrowded, even though it's code compliant.
No.
How can, how can-
No, that's not, that's not-
If you have more than one person per room?
Per room.
Room in the house.
In the house, yes.
Most of the houses, the kitchen, the living room.
It's not bedrooms, it's total rooms.
The living room, the study.
That's even more screwed up than the way I was thinking.
Eight, nine people, not seeing that.
Yeah, there's, there's, right, exactly.
Right, exactly.
Unless it's a, right.
Well, anyways, moving right along.
That's the way the census is chosen to define it, I can't explain the methodology, and I'm not gonna-
Yeah, that's the data you got, I mean, we're not gonna recreate census data here.
And, right, we have overcrowding, we have a lot more than more, one person in, per room in a lot of the houses in poorer areas, and so that-
Yes.
That, regardless of the, regardless of how that supports the data, it's, it's a problem.
And we also know that there's lots of groups that are underrepresented in the census counts, and those are minority population groups, those are low-income groups, those are children under five, for instance, there, there's lots of groups that we know are traditionally undercounted, who don't fill out the survey, or can't be reached, or choose not to, or whatever the situation is. So whatever, whenever a census number looks bad, you can always assume it's probably a lot worse than it looks. How much worse, you know, your mileage may vary.
One of the things that I think I, I'd like to see looked at perhaps a little bit more, I know you made a statement in there about what the anticipated population increase is going to be, and that that's going to be relatively stable. I'd like to, I'd like to be comfortable with that statement, if that appears in our, in our comprehensive plan, and I'd also like to look at that in regards to what has happened to the population, because I think if you went back to 20, to 2003, you may have had a similar statement, and I don't know that it was true, and I don't think we're necessarily seeing that. So the generic thing of saying that this is in the state of Massachusetts is probably true, I know we've got a lot of people leaving the state, so that, that may be true. I'm not sure we're seeing that in Milford, and I want to make sure that they were comfortable with that as we, as we go forward.
Sure, so the, the statement that I made does not apply to Massachusetts, it applies to Milford, these are population projections that are data services that MAPC has done for every community in our region, and we, I, I don't remember the, the numbers off the top of my head, but it was all part of the existing conditions report. Josh, do you remember what that looked like?
Those, those population projections, I believe, were for the purpose of MassDOT, and we were involved, I think it was MAPC and the Donahue Institute and others, who did it on a per municipality basis, and I, I would have to go back and look at the actual, like, data inputs that they used. But it was, it was a sort of rigorous demographic study, and it's what MassDOT is effectively basing their sort of roadway service projections on.
Like I said, I don't think we've seen that recently, certainly.
Yeah, and you saw the numbers at the most recent School Builder Authority.
And that's, that's, you know, it would be good as part of our process with that, in terms of making sure this corresponds with that, if we need to go to mass building with, with the number and stuff, where we're getting stuff, so that's why I wanted-
You were there.
If you have those types of things, it, it could be critical on a couple of areas in, in where that came from. And, okay, is it, is it actually showing that way based on what we have now? Because I think we've seen a significant increase in population over the last, you know, above what, what you would normally see or expect over the last seven, eight years.
Well, wouldn't it be the case that a lot of that population increase is the very population that does not report?
Yes.
Self-report.
Yeah, also a consideration to make as well, absolutely.
Well, I think you, and, you know, I don't know how much, how we get into this, but I think one of the ways to, to perhaps figure out if that's what's happening is taking a look at what the school population has become, because regardless of whether they're counted in the census or not, the amount of school kids we have, they are, most of, most of them, I do believe, are going to school. So if, if there's not a corresponding population increase, but there's a huge increase in town, then we're having people that aren't being counted.
Yeah.
Do you have, are there school projections that are being used for the new facilities?
Correct, yeah, so just on that same topic, our, our high school is in the top 1% of, of student growth in, in, across Massachusetts. So when you start looking at that, we're, over the last 10 years, our student population growth at the high school alone has been 12%. Across the district, I believe it's up 10%. So, yeah, so we're seeing, and, you know, we saw steady growth, we saw a decline during COVID, then we saw a huge spike after COVID. So, you know, again, yeah, when you look at those numbers, and, you know, they are, they're coming to our schools, we're seeing that massive increase, so I think when you say slow to steady population, I guess, you know, I would also counter on that. About six years ago, NESDEC, which was a, you know, an outside source that we also used that was supposed to help us project population growth, and looking at, you know, 40Bs and, and birth rates, a whole bunch of different, you know, things that would create population growth, they said the same thing, that they said, oh, yeah, it's gonna be a very minor population growth, it's a good population growth. Now we're top 1%. So.
I mean, it's funny, the data on it, though, and I do, like, it's, I don't think people have come up with an answer in terms of, to, to explain this discrepancy, but MAPC also did a data study on housing production and its relationship to school enrollment across municipalities, and the data shows no relationship between housing production and school enrollment. So communities that were having an explosion of housing production were seeing a school enrollment decline and vice versa, like what you're seeing here, where you're seeing a decline in housing production by the numbers John just shared, and an increase, like a dramatic increase in school enrollment. So those, those two don't correlate, but why, like, why there's not a correlation there is, I think, the deeper question that no one really has, has the golden answer for.
Well, there's a lag.
It's not just lag, it's a lot of other stuff as well.
There's a lot of other stuff that goes into it, and because there's, and I've found a lot of this very interesting in the MVP discussions, that, you know, things like policing, like policing, that makes a big difference in where people, especially the unreported populations where they choose to live. So there's towns that are, I guess, sort of overpoliced, overpolice those populations, and so they stay away from there. So, you know, there's a lot of, it's very complicated and complex when it comes to, in particular, those undocumented.
It's, yeah, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
The studies I've seen over the years, you can't depend on a long-range study. We did, when we were doing Stacy, we did, we had, did two studies to make sure they were doing. And there was almost no growth, or very small growth. And it booms. And it's, again.
Yeah, and on that, yeah, Woodland Elementary School that was completed in 2017, when we opened those doors, it was already overcrowded. Right? Because we, the building process started, you know, five to seven years prior, and they used those population numbers of the school. By the time we got to the point where the school was open, our population, again, had increased. So I'd say we just, you know, we just need to be careful.
Of course.
You know, as Joe had said, on making those types of statements, just because even though the, the information we get that says population's gonna slow down, we're not seeing it. So, and, and we're not seeing that correlation. So that's all, just from the carefulness of the statement.
Is it possible to quantify for me right now how the school district considers overcrowding? Is that a student-to-teacher ratio that gets crossed, or is that?
Yeah, just exactly that. Just the number, the student-to-teacher ratio would be the easiest way to.
Do you know what that is?
Number of, the number of classrooms.
Well, yes, which is your student-teacher ratio, right. So, yeah, I mean, we know.
15 to 1, 20 to 1, 30 to 1? Do you know what that looks like?
Depends what, the union contracts, we try to keep it everything under 24 to 1.
Okay.
But again, it's such a dynamic number, because not everybody's just in the general school population.
Of course.
So it's really dynamic. But, yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no problem.
It's his job.
Ideally, if you talk to, yeah, if you talk to any teacher out there, she'd, they'd want, he or she would want him below 20 to 1, right?
I'm sure they'd want it at 10 to 1, absolutely. For sure.
35 to 40.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I think it's tough, but what I would invite us into in this conversation is to have the, like, this specific conversation we're just having, help us uncouple a little bit housing from some of the other concerns and issues and challenges that the town is facing. I think that they, it's easy to put them together, but it's, I think what the history of the town's housing production and school enrollment since the last comprehensive plan has shown that you're both having housing challenges in terms of housing production, affordability, the diversity of the housing types, and also having school enrollment challenges. So it's like, I think we, we should try to make a little more progress on helping people have housing options in the town, because it's not, what the current posture of the town is, isn't helping the other challenges also. So it's, if, if, if that made sense, hopefully, like, I'm, I'm trying to uncouple some of these related challenges that may, those challenges may remain no matter what your housing policies
Yeah, even the 40Bs, you know, if you go up to Deer Street or Birch Place, that's not solving any of our overcrowding.
Right.
Not one, not one bit. And so we can add, you know, we have multiple more 40Bs coming in. And I, I mean, I think that's our strongest, our strongest, not that I think, I think it's a fruitless battle, but against a 40B is that it's not gonna, it's not gonna help the people that need the help the most. And I think, you know, not, if it helps us, great in fighting against the 40B. But I think we need to take a serious look at providing more, and I don't know how that, I don't know how to do that, but to provide more afford, just regular.
Really affordable.
Really affordable housing. And, you know, I don't know what the big hesitation is with the, with the townspeople, I guess, with residential on, on the upper floors of downtown. But I certainly think that that would be a huge help. And I, I understand there's a lot of challenges with the building code, but I guess that's, just allowing it, I guess, would, would be a good, would be a good first step in my mind. But then also to, to allow for multifamily, multi-unit housing where we don't really right now.
The other, the other point I would make there, too, and not, not to give you all more, more fire on your 40B fights, but the, if you look at the income numbers that John was presenting, here we are, in this, you know, the first column, which is the 89,600. If you then also compare that to the income limitations for 40B, so even when you take 80% of the area median income, that 80% for a single-person household is $82,700. For a four-person household, 80% of the area median income is $118,000. So that's, that's already with the 40B discount on income qualifying for a unit. And that is well in excess of the current median income in the community. So it's not, it's not an affordability which would, which would match the need in the town. And I think that, that to me points to other techniques for helping to build affordability in the community, like inclusionary zoning, maybe thinking about other requirements for deeper affordability beyond 80% AMI to get to, you know, 60% AMI or some lower number, where you're actually approaching closer to the, the actual median income of the town. Those, those type of mechanisms, I think, would go much further in addressing the affordable housing need than what 40B is currently doing for the town.
I know it's an avalanche of information to process. But just, thank you all for your patience this evening.
Yes, thank you for that. And I, I think it's also interesting to return back to the slide where we talked about the housing goals. Just since we did the deep dive in the data, just, and of course, this sort of relationship between the deep dive and the data and the community conversation relating to the goal exists, but we just have the opportunity tonight to look at, look back at housing now with the conversation we've just had. And I think, hopefully, a lot of these goals maybe resonate more after the conversation we've just had. And you might see how they could impact these challenges, which we've gotten into the details of. So we appreciate the conversation tonight. And I think it's been very helpful for us.
Well, maybe a dumb question, but I see all those initial draft goal ideas. We develop the plan. Are we gonna be filling in those columns? So in other words, second one, increase the share of affordable housing through zoning and housing policies. There will be some things that we'll be discussing, some recommendations, some proposals, some, maybe achieve what we're looking to achieve.
Yeah, absolutely. So within the umbrella of goals, there, there's gonna be things like strategies and action items and things like that to really drill down to what you're speaking of. Because this right now doesn't really say to do anything. It's a place that you want to get to. And then through the goals, strategies, and recommendations, we kind of lay out that roadmap to see how you can get from point.
I look at these as ideals and ideas, but I question achievability for some of them.
Absolutely. And the achievability is gonna come into what the actual recommendations and strategies look like. And, well, we'll have conversations around, you know, how feasible is it? How much does it cost? How much time would it take to do it? Things like that.
Questions I'm heading to.
Absolutely. You're, you're a few, we're reading the same book, you're a few chapters ahead of us.
That's very unlikely. Thank you.
For, for better or worse, this will all get more detailed. Thank you all for the time again this evening. Appreciate you all so much.
So you're still looking at coming back?
Oh, yes.
On the 15th.
Yeah, let me just skip to that real quick. I forgot about that. Our next meeting. Yeah, so we're anticipating coming back before you all on the 15th. And then after that, probably on November 19th, if that's the proper date. And that will continue, we'll continue in this model of giving you updates on sort of what other moving pieces there are. And then the next topic discussion will be a deep dive on community services and facilities.
Well, November 5th is the election day, so we're not gonna be meeting that day. So the first regular planning board meeting would be the 12th of November. So I don't know if you want to, since we're going into December, and you normally only meet once in December anyway, I would suggest you, November, your meeting dates would be the 12th and the 26th. 26th is gonna be, may or may not have people available to do it anyway.
The red, two days after that, Thanksgiving?
Yes. Yep. So if you're, you know, the November meeting would be the 12th. And, you know, if that's the only meeting you want to have in November, then, and they need to come back in November, then that would be the date to also include the ad hoc as an agenda item.
Can we, we could meet on election day, can't we?
Well, there's problems meeting on election day. So we try, just try not to do it.
Yeah. I think this room has TV broadcast after elections.
What about, not anymore?
They won't have it for, for national. No.
What about doing an ad hoc on?
I don't know if these guys want to come out on election day, but that seems like a good option to make.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I mean, that, that to me would be a good option, to have the ad hoc on, on election day. But I, obviously, you guys coming out on election day, I don't know how convenient or not that is, and I don't want to certainly affect anybody's ability to vote or not vote.
I think the team is probably fine. We generally try to avoid election day just for the purpose of people being able to pay attention. But we, I mean, we haven't had too many residents attending these meetings in specific.
Yeah, and especially for, yeah, for what we may or may not be doing, then I don't think it would be that bad to have it on that day.
Well, but would it be that bad to have it on the 12th?
Yeah. The, those Tuesdays, the reason why we have these set up is because at least two of the members here have other things on those Tuesdays that we would have to change. So I'd rather not, especially both of those Tuesdays. Three members? Four members?
I'm not, I'm a half member.
Well, so what are you saying for, just generally, for meetings in November?
Say that on the regular date, except do the ad hoc on the, on the date, on election day. And then we'd have our regular meeting two weeks later.
All right.
That's, that's Joe Caligione. That's not the board, so.
So what about the rest of you guys?
I, I prefer it, but again, I don't wanna.
You prefer?
Prefer what?
You prefer the same as Joe.
Same as Joe.
The most important thing in this world is.
He doesn't.
I'm concerned.
I can, I'm fine with it personally. I can check with the team. It'll either be historical and cultural resources or natural resources and open space that would be joining me that evening. So I can check with those.
But if yours, but if the board is saying they want to meet on the 5th and the, and the 19th, then the ad hoc committee could be on the 19th.
No, what we're saying is that doing it on election day, just having the ad hoc committee is our only thing. So we're not affecting people that may have a regular.
All right.
We don't, we don't want to affect them from being able to vote, because we have no idea who those people are.
Yeah. All right.
You saying there's a conflict on the 12th?
Yes.
For another meeting?
Yeah. At least two, probably three of us.
Understandable.
All right. So the dates are the 5th and the 19th?
If we can find out from, I knew if it's okay.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if Josh can get back to us, then that, that's acceptable. I think that's where we should go.
Okay. I will talk to the team and confirm that with Larry for November 5th. But we will be, we're considered on for October 15th.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, got it. Sounds good.
Let's confirm we have rooms for the 5th. That's the night they're counting votes, and things are a little crazy in here. They sometimes use both rooms.
Down here.
Yeah. My only concern now, but I kind of think a lot about that.
We should be.
It'll be kind of hectic.
They count in here before they close polls, though?
They're running around like nuts.
All right, we'll just find out.
Yeah, I just checked out.
I'm the warden for precinct three. So I will be work, I may be working. At the last election, they had, because people were working, because I had a conflict. I was a write-in candidate for this board, so I didn't work the election. But normally, I'm the warden for precinct three, so I may be working. That's not a reason to change the plan that you all decided.
I'm not in favor of having our election day either. It's a sacred day for me.
Well.
What's wrong with the 12th and the 17th, or whatever?
We have meetings.
We just let me have.
Okay. And the 19th?
We have, we have meetings at that night, so we can't, we can't.
The 12th or 19th also.
Abe, Joe, and Rick, all have, and, and me, for whatever that's worth. So you would lose, you'd either lose four people, or you would.
Lose 66%.
Or you're asking those four people to move their other meeting.
Well, if I'm the only one who can't make the 5th.
Well, Joe's saying that.
You, we're gonna do an ad hoc, no, no, the ad hoc committee. Not that we don't want you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. But I'm technically not a member of the ad hoc committee. And I'm only one person, could not be here. He's a little concerned about it as well. Whereas if you flew, you'd pass.
Joe, the 19th is not.
I mean, I'm focused on it.
Yeah, the second and fourth, fourth Tuesdays of the month are not good for.
So the 19th would be a.
Yeah, we could have it, but the 19th is, is clear. It's just that.
Is there two, more?
Well, that's a lot in November if we're only doing the 19th. That's why I wanted, I said, election day for the ad hoc committee. Because if you're only gonna meet on the 19th, then we're having our regular meeting plus the ad hoc. It might be a long meeting. I don't know what's on the agenda. We don't know if that's November, but I think it's just too much to ask for one meeting.
I know for like, school committee, we'll do our subcommittees first, for the first hour, and then do our regular business after.
Right. But that's, and that's what we would, these, we've been doing these guys first. But if you then are asking all of the people that are doing regular planning board business to sit through this.
No, you do it after.
We wouldn't do that. We would do the regular meeting first, and then the ad hoc.
And we can also go faster. We've gotten the habit of going a little more time.
I'd like to go faster right now. We've still got another agenda item to mention.
Yeah, can we all just think about this and decide on the first day of October?
Or I can decide it tomorrow.
Yeah.
And let you know.
Good.
Good night.
Well, why don't we, why don't we at least then plan on getting some additional information for October? Like, is this room available? And would we have people available on that day?
November.
Yes.
Yeah.
Had our first meeting.
Yep, all right. So you want to do agenda item four real quick?
Please.
Yep.
So I gave you the packet again for the proposed zoning amendment.
Ricky.
You can take your nameplate, too, if you want.
It follows, too.
Sure, if you want to.
I got the same problem. Always forgetting mine.
Thank you.
See you, Rick.
All right. So at any rate, I put together the packet again for the proposed zoning amendment to comply with the new accessory dwelling unit regulations from the state. And what Brian and Jerry and I tried to do is. And what Brian and Jerry and I tried to do is include as much stuff as we could in there based on the new legislation.
Larry, hold on just one second. You got, you all done or you got something?
We were just trying to decide if we should stay for your A D U discussion or not.
Well, it's not going to take, it's not going to take long.
You go right ahead.
It's a public hearing, aren't we?
It's not going to take long.
There was a dissonance on the gun.
So, based on what the legislation limits us to, this is as much as we can control. So, that's why it looks the way it looks. It allows, uh, it allows the units, but requires a site plan approval for each one. So, other than that, it follows exactly what the state tells us we can do.
We'll schedule a public hearing.
We already did. It's the first. It's October 1st. It's already been published. The notice, the copy of the notice is in the packet.
When does the, so, I've already had people asking when, I guess, the, the state thing goes into effect in February?
February 1st.
February?
Right.
When would, when can somebody start applying for this?
Well, when the A G sends us the approval. So, depending upon when 90 days after town meeting is or the effective date of the legislation, either one.
Okay.
That's why we needed to do this now.
No, I know. I, I thought there was something with, um, I thought there was something with once it was advertised.
For, that's this.
Right.
It's already advertised.
But that, that this go, this, this doesn't go into, into effect, but you can't bypass it per se.
Right.
So, you're still, I mean, you got, you got February when the state goes in is effectively what it is as of right now. Because we can't...
You can't buy it.
Yeah. They expect to do something.
Okay. But we're, this, in this case, we're loosening the regulations as opposed to...
It's going to match the state. It's all going to be the same.
I understand. But normally, you, it's, once it's advertised, you can't bypass the, you can't put something in that's currently allowed.
Yeah. In this case, it's weird.
But this, because it's different, we're going the other way. Okay.
In fact, my advice to people that want to do supplemental apartments is to, don't do it. Just hang on and you'll be able to do something a hell of a lot easier later on.
That's what I've been telling people as well. But I wanted to be able to clarify...
Just tell them to go away.
I don't do that.
No. No, it's not a good idea.
We want to get this in before February because it will be, February 1st, it will be law. They can do it. So, what we're saying is...
And they won't have, right. They won't have to do a site plan.
They won't have to do a site plan. That's correct. So, we're just trying to control it by having the site plan.
Given with the public hearing, there's not much we can change anyway. So...
Right. But, yeah.
No, it is what it is.
Legal technicality. So, at least this way we're covered.
Yes.
Which is why I didn't bring it to you guys to send it to the selectmen so they could remand it. I just gave it to the selectmen and said, send it to them. They said, oh, okay.
They should do it anyways at that point. You know, if somebody's looking to do it, they're going to have to switch.
You ready?
Yeah.
It isn't the bylaws. You can do it.
Move to the adjourn?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. And unanimous of five. Good evening. Thank you again.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all.